Okay, we just did a live stream test going to Vimeo. This is Carrington once again. Everything looks great. So what we're gonna do now is put up the one graphic until seven o'clock. And then once seven o'clock hits, we're going to record this meeting and then officially go live.
Come on, Kent. I was hoping the dog would be a part of our meeting.
Well, me too, but he got bored and left.
We were commenting on that here, too.
Yeah, that doesn't speak too highly for me. He gets bored with me that quickly.
No, you'll be green.
I don't know. Hello, Kent.
Randy, you look like the Hulk.
I know. That's what Pam just said. Now we're gonna get me not green here. I gotta figure that out. I've got my laptop, but I...
I bet you have a background on. Can you turn your background off, maybe?
Pam, can you come here and see this? I'll have my wife try here. Let's see.
On your video, choose that little up carrot and go to choose virtual background, and I think you can like turn it off.
Alright, everyone. Just wanted to remind you guys we're six minutes until we're going live. If you could unmute your mics until we are live at seven o'clock.
I don't know what to do, Pamela. What did we do last time?
I don't know.
Put it on here.
Well, you're green.
Hey, Kent.
Yes.
This is Randy. How are you?
Good, Randy. How are you?
Do you have any idea on this laptop? Am I green? Do you see green? Do you see me at all?
I see who's green. Yep.
Any words of wisdom? We did my gram the other day, and I think I had to get on my... Should I get... I got two desktop behind me here at my desk at my home. But I can only use this to see you guys. Should I try and get on through the... my computer? Or leave it like this?
Well, I think you look good. So I'll let the others vote.
I'll just leave it then, my friend. Alright, I've got my Warren shirt on. You probably can't tell in this green. I've got a big old W in front of me. How you been?
Good. Yeah. Busy.
How do I know if anybody else is on here? All I see is you as a picture. Oh, I probably need to hit the plus sign. There we go. Yep, there's Lynn.
Randy, did you try turning your background off?
I don't know how to do that. I see mute. I see shot video, share content, participate.
Shot video. And then there's a little like arrow next to it, a little teeny tiny one.
Let me see. Shot video.
Like that little arrow right next to it.
That shot video. Oh, wait. Hold on. That screwed it up.
Be in the box. View in through the little arrow.
Yeah.
Click on that, and then a little menu will open up, and then go to choose virtual background, and then click none. You might have a background on.
So I hit that arrow on up top. It says see all photos, add to. Then there's a search class. I don't know all these others. I don't see anything that says.
Oh, there's not like a video where it's stop video, where there's a video settings or choose virtual background?
I'll keep looking here. Hit more. Share content, participants. Yeah, I don't know. Done it. Oh, yeah. Virtual background. Is that what I hit, Allison?
Yes. Now click none, which should be your first option.
I was just told that we are already live streaming. I just got a text message. They can see and hear everything.
Yes! You got it, Randy. That's good. We can...
Hi, Gloria.
Hi.
Welcome back, Dr. Baxter.
Alright, now how do I get everybody's picture, Allison? All I see is me. Are y'all there?
Randy, just push on those five dots at the bottom of... Well, no, you're on the computer. I'm on the phone.
Alright, let me...
Do you see a view options at the top of the screen, Randy?
There's an X. Up top, it's just got a picture of me, and there's an X there. So I just cross out of that or stay like this?
Well, you want to be probably in like side by side mode, which you can get through view options, I think.
Down below, there's a none with a circle on it. Then there's a plus sign, a picture of a bridge. It looks like three dots at the bottom. And then up top, Kent, there's a X circle. If I hit the X while I leave the meeting, I wonder if I hit this X? Let me see. Ah, now I see y'all. Can you see me?
Hey, Dennis, are you there?
It's Carrington, I believe.
I'm getting news that we're already currently live streaming, that we've been live streaming. So I don't know if there's a way to turn that off until the meeting starts, but the audience can hear and see us.
Yes, earlier we suggested everyone mute their mics, because that's the way we have to do it. We have to go live at a point in time, which is to force to do a test, we have to be up live at 6:45.
Got it.
And that test is a live test.
Can you guys see me?
No, Michelle.
Okay.
All I see is Lynn and Rachel.
Can you see me now?
No.
Cannot start video. Failed to start the video camera. Please select another video camera in settings.
Michelle, you may just have to be audio because it is seven o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting order.
That's fine.
Carrington, I need you to disable screen sharing, please.
How's that?
Answer?
Outstanding.
Okay, if everyone could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
United States of America. It stands. One nation, under God. Invincible with liberty and justice.
Thank you so much, everyone. We are going to start with Dr. Hanson and the superintendent's report.
Good evening, President Burke, members of the board. It's great to see everyone here this evening. I provided my monthly activities there on the agenda. Lynn asked me the other day if all of those were Zoom meetings, and yes, those were all Zoom meetings. You know, lots of information coming our way and lots of meetings just to make sure that we're staying on top of it. I do want to highlight the Marion County weekly meeting that we have with the Health Department and the Marion County Superintendents. We are monitoring the data on a weekly basis, and I would like to share with the board that we do have a meeting in mid-June to review the most recent data and discuss what the start of the 2021 school year could look like. And I'll reference that here a little bit in the rest of my report. Want to share with the community that today we started COVID-19 drive-through testing with our partnership at the Marion County Health Department and Warren Central High School. The times on that are 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. It is a free testing, but if you want to get tested, you do have to register. You can register onsite or online at marionhealth.org/indycovid. So we're excited to provide that resource for our Eastside community. Also wanted to kind of highlight some things that are gonna happen this summer. We are gonna do our registration a little different for our families. We're gonna have some onsite registration available starting in June, and that will run through July. Starting in July, we will be offering for the first time online registration for our families, so that way we can capture students who will be attending Warren Township Schools sooner than later. So we're gonna offer both an in-person following social distancing and safety precautions, but then also offering a online component to that. We will be mailing summer packets to our students in grades K through eight, starting in early June. As you know, our students will be keeping their devices over the summer if they so choose to. They can access our digital content that's available. But we also thought we would offer something that in case we had students who don't have connectivity, the opportunity to maintain and freshen up their grade level skills. We're excited to partner with a company that will be mailing these directly to our students' homes. So we're looking forward to that. I'm excited to share that we have about 1,400 students who have signed up for our 912 summer school virtual options. As you know, this year, we are not charging our students for any of the summer courses, and I think that's made them more attractive. I also think students recognize how important credit attainment is. So some students are catching up, and I think we have some students that are getting ahead as well. So really excited about that. I do want to make a couple of comments about the fall. I know we've been getting a lot of questions of what the school year is going to look like. I will be the first to say that we learned very quickly this spring. We learned a lot this spring. I want to commend our teachers, our parents, our students, our administrators for making the best of a situation that kind of came at us very fast. That being said, with the information that we have today, we foresee a virtual option as well as a face-to-face option, providing that schools will be open. My hope is to communicate that to our students, staff, and families by the end of June. As I mentioned, we have a mid-June meeting with the Marion County Health Department and the mayor's office and the other superintendents. As you know, Marion County is a little bit behind the governor's stages. He announced today that Stage Three would be starting on Friday. However, for Marion County, Stage Three won't start until June 1st, so we have to be mindful of that. Graduation, we're continuing to work with graduation commencement plans. On behalf of the board and the district, today our graduates were acknowledged in the Indy Star. So hopefully you were able to see that. And then the last thing I'd like to share tonight is that normally in May, we are recognizing and celebrating our retirees. We will do that in June, and we may do that in person, actually. So if we don't meet in person, we will ask them to participate in our board meeting so that we can celebrate their years of service to Warren Township. Be happy to answer any questions, but that's my report this evening.
I don't see any questions. Does anyone have any? Okay, it doesn't look like that. So we're going to move on to board comments, and I will start with Terry.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say I'm glad to see our community pulling together and working hard to support everyone. I've seen a lot of the yard signs and a lot of seniors out in their capping gown taking photos. And that's something that I know for parents, it's really hard that they're not gonna hear their student's name as they walk across the stage, you know, like we had scheduled here in the next few weeks. But our hearts and our prayers are with those kids as they continue in their journey and as they sit here and work through this coronavirus outbreak with us. Kudos to all of our teachers and our support staff. I know that it's taken a lot of planning and a lot of hard work on your ends. Please know that I sincerely appreciate everything everyone is doing to still educate and prepare our kids. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Terry. Julie, you're up next.
Okay, I'd just like to say welcome, everybody, and it's nice to see your bright smiling faces. I'd also like to congratulate a couple of kids that I have adopted at the senior adoption. I don't know if you guys know about that, but there's a page on Facebook where you can go and adopt a senior. So if you haven't and you would like to, and you need that page, let me know, and I'll send that information to you. But I have Brooklyn and Isaiah that I have adopted, as well as all of my robotics kids. And then I actually adopted a couple of kids in our neighborhood who don't go to Warren. So I've been having a lot of fun handing things out and getting things ready, so. And I, once again, want to thank our teachers. They're doing an amazing job, and we're getting close to the end. Hang in there. So that's it. Oh, I've also been doing the food distribution, which has been a lot of fun. So if you're interested in helping, just get ahold of Ryan, and he'll send you a link.
Julie, you might want to repeat the last thing you said. You went out.
If you are interested in doing the food distribution, I've been helping with that, and it's been pretty enjoyable. So if you would like to do that and just get ahold of Ryan, and he can send a link out to you, and you can sign up for it. Not quite sure what we're doing once summer, the actual summer hits yet. I haven't heard on that, but...
Okay, thank you, Julie. Randy, you are up next.
Hello, everybody, and nice to see y'all here. I miss you all tremendously. It's something I was telling Tim today, just to shake his hand, just to touch you guy, you know, hug you and do everything. And I know it's tough for everybody, but I want to congratulate also all the seniors and the teachers, all their work, superintendent on down, everybody that's really stayed together and gotten through this tough pandemic, and even the retirees. I think back of all the luncheons I've went to in the past and just missed those. And congratulations to all them, too, and hopefully we'll all get together soon, and let's all stay healthy and safe.
Thank you so much, Randy. Lynn, you are next.
Good evening, everyone. Just like Julie, I was gonna mention that I've been participating in the food distribution at several different schools, and that certainly brought a lot of joy to my day just going and doing that. I think I volunteered four different places, and every place, the families were so thankful and appreciative of what we were doing. So just a big thank you to Chartwells and all the volunteers that are helping to make that happen. I want to give an exciting update about the Warren Arts and Education Foundation that you may not know about. During our March foundation meeting, we had a visit from Mr. Mekus and Mr. Himes from Warren Central, along with Mr. Russell. They presented a proposal and a request to the board. Basically, the Performing Arts Department is expanding, and this fall will offer band, orchestra, and choir to sixth-grade students in Warren Township. So I think this is so awesome. I know they've been working really hard on the logistics of this for a long time, but I know this will have such a dramatic and positive impact on the arts program. So in adding this additional grade level, the Performing Arts Department needed to purchase or needs to purchase approximately 400 new instruments. So the Warren Arts and Education Foundation has made a bold commitment to give up to $100,000 in a challenge grant to help purchase these instruments for our students. So I think it's just so exciting. As an advocate, I know you all know that. For the benefits of music education, I want to thank Mr. Mekus and his dedicated team of educators for all their hard work with this, so that the sixth graders in our Warren Township schools will now have the opportunity to experience the performing arts. So I'm just really excited to share that news with everyone. Lastly, I did attend the band Zoom meeting, where all the senior band and guard members were recognized. So congratulations to all of them. And I wanted to announce that the first Gold Brigade performance is scheduled on August the 21st as they march in the Indianapolis 500 Parade. So this is definitely certainly something that we can all look forward to and watch hopefully our kids in action. So I know that was a lot of information, but that's all I have for right now. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Lynn. Gloria, you are next.
Well, hello, everyone. I would like to say congratulations to our class of 2020. Wow, you made it! And I know the parents are so excited, and we are excited, too. And then I want to say to our retirees, enjoy your retirement. And we want to thank you for your dedication to Warren, and we just hope you the very, very best in whatever you decide to do from this point on. We're going to miss you. I would also like to say thank you to our teachers that have worked so hard to help the students with e-learning, to help them through this year, and also a special thank you to everyone that have played any kind of part in helping us in our school year. I'd like to say thank you, and enjoy the rest of your summer, and stay safe.
Thank you, Gloria. Michelle, you are next. Michelle, if you were trying to speak, you are still muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. There you go.
Thank you to all of our administrators for an amazing job getting all of this together for our graduating class and everything that you have done to hold this township together during this time, that hard time that everybody's having. And I would like to give a big shout out to my son Bryce Wright, who received an Outstanding Achievement Award for student of the commercial photography class. So he will be going to Heron, and he has done an amazing job. So kudos to you, Bryce, as well as the whole... So kudos to you, Bryce, as well as the whole class of 2020. I'm really sorry that we are going to miss you all walking across the stage. That's all.
Okay, Julie, did you want me to come back to you?
Yeah, I had a question for Lynn. On the band, is that going to be during the day or is it after school? Do you know? Because for a while there, there was a question whether it would be during the school day or if it would be as an extracurricular.
You mean the marching band? Is it going to, is that going to be after school?
The sixth grade, the sixth grade.
Okay, I talked about several different band things, sorry. Excuse me. I believe that's going to be happening during school. That's my understanding of that. Okay, excellent, excellent. Okay, yes, sorry. Yes. During class.
Okay, well, I also would like to thank everyone for joining us and it's always good to see everyone. I would also like to offer my congratulations to our class of 2020. I had a kid in the class of 2020 for an awfully long time and I know a lot of those kids really well. And we will miss handing you your diplomas in early June and hopefully be able to celebrate you in person at some point in time later when it is safe. Also, to all of the retirees, it makes me very sad to not be able to see you. I know that has always been one of the things I have enjoyed the most. Some of you at some times were my teachers and other times you were my kids' teachers. And other times you were just people that I knew that were in buildings for a very, very long time. In fact, there's one retiree that's really, really close to my heart that I've known almost my entire life. It makes me very sad that we are not able to do something now, but I do look forward to doing it later. Thank you, Dr. Hanson, for that. I really have had a good time and I always enjoy this time of year and seeing all of the buildings nominations for their teachers and support staff of the year. And seeing all of those people get recognized. We had a very, very good cohort of excellent teachers and support staff get recognized by all of their buildings. And the state announced on Tuesday, which I guess would be yesterday, now that I'm getting my days of the week, that Indiana for this year was going to name all of their teachers as teacher of the year. And normally I'm not an everyone deserves a trophy sort of person. But I will tell you, in a year like this, each and every one of our teachers and each and every support staff member has gone so far above and beyond and has twisted and turned on every dime possible that they are also very, very deserving of that honor. And I was very happy to hear that the Indiana Department of Ed had chosen to do that. So congratulations to you all because you all really truly deserve it. We are going to move on to public comments. No, sorry, board correspondence. It turns out I can't read. And I know that Julie has some to share with us.
Yes, we have a thank you card. I don't know if you guys can see that. It says, Dear Warren Township School Board Members and Support Staff Employees of MSD Warren Township, we the instructional assistants, as well as other support staff members of Brookview Elementary, wish to thank you. Thank you specifically for caring and well-being of us all by making the decision to continue to support us all financially. You have all no idea how your decision has given us so much, a huge sense of relief during this terrible unimaginable time. Your decision is so much appreciated. Please keep yourselves as well as your family safe as we all journey through this horrific pandemic. Signed by several people, so.
Thank you, Julie. I just did one last check of my email and we do not have any public comments for this meeting. Dr. Hanson, is that still true on your end?
That is the same for me.
Okay, so we are going to move beyond public comments to the consent. Give me one over here. And the consent agenda will consist of approval of minutes, the financial report, payroll claim, claim register and electronic payments, as well as a year-to-date summary of fund balances, the human resources report and gifts and grants. And so I will entertain a motion if someone has one to make.
And make a motion.
I get the motion.
Gloria made the motion first. Do I have a second? Was that you, Terry?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and Terry seconded the motion. Because we can't really see the votes, if we could do a roll call vote, if that's okay with everyone, we're going to go ahead and do that. Julie, do you want to do it or would you like for me to?
All right, Ken, I was just flipping over to the other thing to vote, so. Okay, so Terry. It's yay or nay?
It is yay.
Okay, and I am a yay. And Lynn?
Yay.
Gloria?
Yay.
Randy?
Yay.
Rachel?
Yay.
And Michelle?
Yay.
Okay, so the that passes unanimously, we are going to move on to, sorry, action items, which we will begin with the resolution for the tax anticipation warrant with Mr. Holt.
Good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. This evening, you have a resolution before you for a mid-year tax warrant. This is somewhat unusual. Back in late March, Governor Holcomb issued Executive Order 20-05, which allowed property tax payments to be, in essence, waived for 60 days. And there would be no associated penalties for property tax payments until July 15th, which in essence moves the official date of property tax payments to July 15. In doing that, we will not receive our normal mid-year distribution in June. And so specifically, we have a debt service payment at June 30th that we need to pay. So we will, as almost 90% of the school corporations in the state of Indiana will be doing, issuing a short-term mid-year warrant with the Indiana Bond Bank, which is a division of the State Treasurer of Indiana. They pooled these warrants together so that you were able to get a a large pool competitive interest rate. This will close June 25th and this will allow us to make our June debt service payment. And then once we receive our final distribution, hopefully by mid to late August from the county auditor, we will then repay this warrant back to the Indiana Bond Bank. This is similar to what we do on an annual basis for annual tax warrants. You sometimes will do a mid-year warrant when there are exceptions to revenue distributions like this. So be happy to answer any questions for you on this. We anticipate this to be about 40 to 45 days in issuance.
Does anyone have any questions?
I'll make a question though.
Sorry. So Julie's made the motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
And Randy has seconded the motion. Now, do we have any questions or comments or discussion? Okay, Julie?
Okay, Terry, yay or nay?
Yay.
Rachel?
Yay.
I'm a yay. Randy?
Yay.
Lynn?
Yay.
Gloria?
Yay.
Michelle?
Yay.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to our student photography vendor RFP, also Mr. Holt.
Yes, back at the May 6th work session, we brought to you just some results for a, on RFP for district-wide student photography. At that particular time, we shared that there were three vendors that submitted proposals. And the committee that was made up of Mason Gollmeyer and then an elementary representative, middle school representative and high school representative unanimously went and selected Interstate Studio as their leading vendor for student photography services for the next contract. At the work session, we talked about the length of the contract, which was originally five years. We've gone back to Interstate and asked them to shorten that to a three-year cycle with the same terms and they were in agreement with that. So we were asking for your approval to select Interstate Studios as the next district-wide student photography vendor. Be happy to answer any questions.
I make a motion.
Okay, so Gloria made the motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
And Lynn has seconded it. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, if we could do a vote.
Terry?
Yay.
Rachel?
Yay.
I'm a yay. Randy?
Yay.
Lynn?
Yay.
Gloria?
Yay.
And Michelle?
Yay.
And that one passes unanimously.
Okay, and so now we, you're welcome. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Holt. We will move on to Mr. Schroder and the Chromebook RFP.
Thank you, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. At the May 6th board work session, we discussed the results of our Chromebook RFP for freshmen and sophomores at the high school and would recommend approval of process as the winner of that RFP. Be happy to answer any questions you may have about it.
Do I have a motion? So moved.
I'll make, I'll second it.
So that was Julie making the motion and Terry seconding it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, are there any questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Julie?
Terry?
Yay.
Rachel?
Yay.
And I'm a yay. Randy?
Yay.
Lynn?
Yay.
Gloria?
Yay.
Michelle?
Yay.
And that one passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Schroder. And now we are going to move on to discussion items, which is the Student Success Handbook and Ms. Woods.
Hi, thank you, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. You guys should have a red line version of the Student Success Handbook. I'm going to kind of go over some of the highlights of those changes, which there were not significant changes this year. One thing we heard during our strategic plan session was recommendation to change parents and guardians to parents and caregivers. It has a broader scope of many friends and family. And you know, it takes a village to support and raise kids and that really applies better into more people. So we made those changes. We inserted our new Journey of a Graduate visual. We expanded and better defined the different components of multi-tiered systems and supports, which includes both tier two and tier three of PBIS, our second step curriculum. And we just expanded that section a little bit. We added some supports to the Support and Consequence page. And combined, which this takes over the whole code section, the chart that's in there, and we recognized that level four and level five, where there was no difference. We had some different consequences, but they applied to all the same codes. And so we removed and combined those two levels. There's a change in there about, because we have now direct certification for free and reduced and it's really focused now, they have to fill out, families have to fill out textbook rental forms should they need that. So that statement changed to reflect that change with direct certification. And we added just a statement about that we all as school staff are mandated reporters. And then the two new areas are a recess about when we will go in or stay inside for recess, depending on how hot it is and how cold it is. So we have consistency among all of our schools. And we use recommendation from community and our nurses to determine those temperatures. And we also added just a statement about dietary restrictions. Chartwells requires a note if we're going to need to do special meals. And there are two areas that I know were brought to my attention that we need to add. Attendance with how things are right now and not sure what they'll look like in the fall. Some language around our attendance policy. I've sent that to our attorneys to help them create and craft some language for that. So that will be forthcoming and I'll share that as soon as I get it. And then also, we're going to add a statement in there about where to find updates. We recognize depending on what happens in the fall, that we may need to update the handbook. We usually don't need to do that. We usually get it approved and it's good for that year, but we may need to make updates. We'll make sure to determine what that looks like, which will likely be via our website. But we'll make sure that we put that in the front of the book. So if there are other things that come up in between now and next meeting, I'm happy to meet with any of you guys. Or we can, you know, add and take away things as needed. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Terry does.
I have a question about the temperatures for recess in and out. Are you going by what the actual temperature is or the real feel? Have you thought about that idea?
Yeah, so it is, let me pull it up because we stated in there. So it's for heat, it's temperature or heat index above 90. And for cold, it's temperature, including the wind chill. So if the wind chill then takes it below 20 degrees or below, then we would stay inside. So it includes, like the real feel, like one of my apps has a real feel. I would say that is because of the heat index and the wind chill. So those things are taken into account.
Thank you.
Yeah. Gloria, you had a question?
You know what, this is far-fetched, but I just wanted to know, because of what we're going through, the COVID-19, was there a need to add anything to the handbook in regards to social services?
So there may be a need to add things to the handbook. I think that that is going to depend on what the fall looks like and what our guidelines are from the Health Department and the governor as far as what we need to follow for safety provisions. You know, one thing that we did add at the end, which I didn't mention on our list of phone numbers, we did add our hotline and we are going to keep that crisis hotline that we created and the e-learning hotline. But that crisis hotline, we identified that it's a need for the district. And so we're going to keep that going even once things return to normal. So that was added. But yes, Gloria, we may have to add some things once we know, you know, what restrictions and guidance that we're under from the Health Department and Governor.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions for Allison right now? Okay, if everyone could take-
You know what, I do want to mention one other thing. At our last meeting, there was a gentleman there talking about our military students. And I don't know whether, well, we were talking about approving, giving exceptions to some of those. Would that be necessarily put inside of the handbook?
So not necessarily, not all board. So if you guys have a board policy, not all of those are also duplicated in the handbook because it lives in board policy. So I would say it would depend on, so I'm not familiar with that one. So I can't speak to that one directly, but I'm happy to look into it if you want to send it to me and we can see if it makes sense to go in the handbook. But if it lives within board policy too, it doesn't have to be both places.
Okay, any other comments or questions for Ms. Woods? Everyone, if you can review the manual, I know it is not a short document, but it's important that we look over it. We will be voting on that in the June meeting. So thank you so much for your time and for all of your hard work that has gone into it. I really appreciate it.
Absolutely. And feel free to reach out if you guys have questions in between. I'll get you a revised copy once I have the attendance information back from our attorneys.
Thank you. Okay, so we are going to go on to closing comments. And Michelle, I am going to start with you.
I just would like to say thank you again for all of your dedication and hard work for these kids. I really appreciate everything you do every day. That's all. Congratulations again to the class of 2020. I wish we could see them on stage.
Thank you so much, Michelle. Gloria?
I would like to say to everyone, just continue to be strong, stay strong and to continue to stay safe. We're just concerned about everyone and we're concerned about your health and your well-being. So we encourage you to do whatever it takes to be safe. And I also would like to thank our superintendent, Tim, for all the hard work that he's, I've just been observing him working so hard to try to help us have a successful year. Him and the other administrators. So I want to thank him for being a great leader during this time and helping us through all of this. I would like to also thank his administrative secretaries for, I tell you, they do a lot behind the scene. So I would like to thank Kim and Carol for all the work that they're doing, even during this hard time. They're working behind the scene. And also would like to thank David Holt. He's been working really hard with all of our new construction and just trying to make sure that once we come out of this situation, that Warren will continue to be successful and have the things that we need and the students and the community will be so proud of Warren and all the building and renovations. So I want to thank you also, David, and all of your team and everyone that has worked so hard. If I left out anybody, thank you, thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you so much Gloria. Lynn?
Just wonderful to see everybody here this evening. I will just so look forward when we can all be together again. I'll, I'll definitely be giving out some hugs. I'm ready to see people and just get back together and please continue to be safe and healthy. And congratulations to this year's class of 2020. Yes, I definitely will miss not shaking your hands across the stage this year, but congratulations to all of you. And we'll hope to see you guys back here next month. Thank you.
Thank you so much Lynn. Randy?
Big hugs to everybody. I'm hugging y'all right now. But each day we're getting closer. We got to keep saying that. I tell my family and Pam, my wife, each day, we're, we're closer. We got to keep going through and congratulate everybody again, the 2020 seniors, the retirees, all the staff, ministry, everybody, you're doing a great job. Keep it up. We'll get through it.
Thank you so much Randy. Julia? Julie? I'm sorry about that.
That's all right. I'd just like to say to everybody, remember as the state starts opening up more and more, remember to social distance, or I'm going to change that, physical distance. I've done a lot of reading and research on this and they're recommending using the term physical distancing instead of social distancing because they want you to stay together, stay connected with everybody, but remain physically apart as much as possible. So as we're, we're going through these different stages, just remember to stay safe, stay, continue to stay safe, continue to physical distance and keep in contact with people so that you, your mental health is good as well. So I guess that's it. Take care, everybody. We'll see you next month.
Terry?
I know we all talked about it and Julie, that was really nice to say about changing the terminology. I just want everyone to stay positive. It's so important with our mental and social health that you also say positive that things are going to change, things are going to get better. Just know that we're all here together and we're all one community that supports each other. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Terry. So that leaves me. On my calendar for the past two months, as things got canceled, I didn't delete them off. I put the word canceled in front of them, which I think was probably not the wisest choice I have made. And so I wanted to say, again, congratulations to the class of 2020, but to all of our students and to all of our parents, all of our athletes, all of our competitors, all of our band and orchestra people, all of our, everyone in the fine arts, everyone had things they were planning on doing that they missed the opportunity to compete at or to perform at. And I know that there is not a single student or parent or teacher in our township that has not been touched in some way by missing out on something. And so I just wanted to reiterate that it's okay to be sad about that. It's probably healthy to be sad about that and that we really do feel your pain and we are very, very sorry that you missed out on all of those wonderful things. And that we are hoping that being by safe, being safe by physically distancing and by doing what we are doing now, that we are going to be able to hopefully enjoy those things next year. Right now, we're not making a lot of promises about how things are going to look because we can't. But please know that we feel all of your pain. I think about the last time I saw the kids I coached and it still makes me cry a little because I didn't think I was saying goodbye to them that day. We feel your pain and we feel all of those losses and we are here with you and we are holding strong. And I want to thank again, all of the people that have been thanked already, administrators, retirees, support staff, teachers who are there keeping the boat running so that when we really can come back and it's safe to do all of those things again, they're ready to be picked up. So thank you everyone for your time and everyone who has been watching either live or later. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.